All right. Good morning. We have a good turnout this morning of our citizens for our staff meeting and our study sessions. Today is the study session we hold the regularly here in Elba County since January to talk about general issues and subjects of interest between the staff. And so, the staff table is here. I would like to take a quick moment, if I could, if somebody would be doing it. We, as most of you know, Ed and everybody, I think you met him, but Kyle Fanner, would you stand up for just a second? We won't ask you to dance or something.
Thanks.
Kyle, we are deeply honored and pleased to have you joining us on the day after Memorial Day, April 8th as our new Community Director of Planning and Development. And look forward to you being here and we appreciate you being here today. We wanted to be asked to come by to join us for our staff meeting this morning, our study session, so we could kind of get to know you and everybody else get to know you. But thank you for taking the time to be here and we are excited about you being here permanently come first next month.
I'm excited.
Permanently, that means you can never...
Never, ever, ever. Thank you.
This morning's meeting, we've scheduled the meeting for maybe one hour and a half or two hours. And we've got a pretty full agenda. I'd just like to advise our staff that today we have three special guests. We have Sarah Landry, who is from the Community Relations Advisor Department from the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. We have Nancy Prince, who I first met in Lyman some weeks ago. And she is the government, local government liaison person for the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. And we are honored to have and pleased to have the Assistant Attorney General, one of our Assistant Attorney Generals, Jake Madder here this morning, representing the Attorney General's office. So we appreciate you being here. And I think it all started with you calling us and asking if...
Actually, this was Sarah.
Oh, it was Sarah, Sarah.
Yeah.
Asking if you could come and meet with our staff and us this morning and open some discussions and kind of move things. The two of you coming with us. So, we're pleased to have you all and anxious to hear what we want to say. I would advise our staff that normally in our study session, we have time for general issues, which is what the intended meeting is, of course. If we don't have time, based upon the length of time we're going to meet this morning, I would ask you maybe if you have those issues that you need to talk to the rest of the staff and us about to hold them until this afternoon. We have another session scheduled in the afternoon at 1:30. We'll just see how the time thing goes. What I'd like to do this morning and going to do is, the issue that you've asked to talk to us today about is a complicated and complex issue. I come from the newspaper background, so I don't, so I have very little expertise in this area. But we do, we are very, very fortunate in Elba County to have some folks that are extremely experienced in the areas of oil and gas development and all these issues of energy. And Grant Thayer is here with us today. Grant Thayer is our landowner in Elba County, long-term resident, rancher of over 25 years. He has plans of giving land for conservation easements. He holds an MBA and he also is, in 35 years, is a petroleum engineer. And he has been gracious enough to bail me out this morning and I'm going to turn the video over to him and ask him to share it so that we can keep some kind of intelligent consistent conversation going. And I appreciate you doing this for yourself. Grant, I didn't break the gavel, but at this point forward, I am to you.
He's not being very honest. I'm the only unelected one here, so I'm the sacrificial lamb. As I understand it, there's people that want to make presentations and I'm going to defer to you, Mr. Madder, is did you want to make a presentation first or did you wish to just kind of over the documents or how would you like to proceed?
I don't intend to make a presentation. I'm happy to work through the draft rules or do whatever you want to do, answer questions. And I'm really here just to kind of support Nancy and each of you and if possible, explain a little bit about the commission's program and identify some areas where I think the proposed rules are, the commission has some concerns.
Sir, did you wish to say?
So mine, I don't have a presentation either. I just wanted to come and meet each of you as well, answering questions that you might have about the industry as a whole, anything that may be lingering. And then talk about what other communities are doing in relation to regulatory structures around Colorado and local jurisdictions and some options to Elba County outside of regulatory structures as well, or stakeholder groups, things like that. But I just wanted to bring your attention as well.
Can you all hear the staff? Huh? Do we echo? Okay. Normally, we're on the same page, but we're a little, we have a large group today, so we had to split tables.
Right. Well, with that in mind, what I'd like to do is, I'm also the chairman of the Writing and Editing Committee, however you want to describe it. And best described as brain damaged individuals, so it's taken quite a while. What I'd like to do is just make kind of a quick statement, then I want to get right into what you want to do. And the group had been working for about two years. It started out that we were going to regulate everything, including the amount of sunlight in the sky. And it become quite obvious that that wasn't going to work. We, after we wrote the first draft, which was 65 pages, we met with the Oil and Gas Commission and they said, "Well, this is really neat, but it won't work." So, we asked them to give us some guidance with respect to what to do and the suggestion to the Oil and Gas Commission was that if we needed to do something special that was in excess of or in parallel with the state regulations, that we consider the MOU. So, we've gone through and we've written a set of regulations. The regulations, the way we think we've written them, whether we're successful or not, is basically two pieces. One is it asks for the conforms with the statewide regulations. Secondly, it authorized the negotiation of an MOU. And recognized, the third part, which was the most important to many of the people on the editing committee, was the verification of requirements by the COGCC. In other words, anything below the surface was them and anything above the surface was us. And obviously, that sure sounds good over breakfast, but by the time you get to dinner, as they have, there's some things that don't work. So, we tried to find a workable ground in between. Now, if it's been successful, I don't know. But we, so the way that this thing is set up now, it is in two pieces. One is regulation, one is not. At least the way we see it, and I'm going to defer to you, good intentions in reality, if that's the case. The intention was we have regulations, then you can do anything you want with respect to the statewide regulations, once you follow the state regulations. And that if you had reasonable recognition and mitigation of surface issues. Now, we overreacted on surface issues, I don't know, but that's what, that was the concept. And the other thing was that the regulations would authorize the MOU. The MOU is not part of the regulations all, at least the way we see it. It's just authorized, and the concept anyway, and this was not our concept, it was a suggestion by the COGCC, is that we can get anything we want in there as long as the other department agrees. The muscle behind the idea of the MOU was time. Because if you go through the standard, at least the way the regulations in the county are now, you go through the standard procedure, you can get anything you want with respect to following the state rules, however it takes time. And I spent 30 years as an operational manager for Elba County and time is your enemy. So, I recognize that time is an important aspect of all of it, especially if you have a president or a CEO that wants to done yesterday. So, the whole thing is, is that the concept was is by trading the MOU, that for time, that it would be good in terms of the oil and gas industry. And I know that there's, we've heard through the grapevine, sometimes not through the grapevine pretty directly, is that there's some issues. One is pits. In the regulations, we've written them now, or at least as we think we've written them, pits are authorized. They just have to go through a procedure. Freshwater pits are very easy. Saltwater pits are a little bit more difficult, but certainly doable. The issue was setbacks. And in terms of setbacks, in the regulations, exclusive of the MOU, basically it says if you follow state rules, you're cool. However, in the MOU, we've put in there, because we start out at 1320 and the concept there, and Lucker is pointing to me that maybe we've got it backwards, is that the concept is there, we start at 1320 feet and mitigate things like noise and site and that stuff, back to the statewide regulations. There's a provision within the regulations that basically addresses the issue of site specific situations. And as I told some people the other day, I said, any grade six student within the site specific language there could find a reason to get back to the statewide regulations pretty easy. The question there is though, is that in this county, in the trial in terms of different viewpoints, is on the editing committee, we have several people that were five acre owners, no minerals. So, they didn't have a financial vested interest. And then there was people like me that own a significant amount of land, own some minerals, own some water and all of these kind of things. So, the exercise was trying to find something in line with that would cause everybody to find the provisions acceptable. Those, I didn't use the word, I used the word acceptable. So, if we've missed the acceptable level from your guys' perspective and to our guys' perspective, I think that's the reason we're having this meeting. So, I said everything I need to say. Do you want to just kind of talk about regulations now or did you...
Sure. I mean, just to follow up on what you said, I think the MOU process is a very effective way to address some of the issues that you're struggling with and it's been used effectively in other parts of the front range. Erie, for example, one of them recently older. And it allows local jurisdiction to obtain various safeguards that it may otherwise not be able to impose on an operator if you provide a precarious state approach. In other words, if you have a faster permitting time, it's basically a contractual agreement whereby the operator agrees to abide by higher standards. And those higher standards then become part of the commission's permitting process. So, you have, the way it should work, and Nancy actually has some additional materials on this, your operator under MOU, for example, promises to use green completions and if possible states 1,500 feet away from any known. Those are common MOU considerations. So, when permitting their project with the state, they, the operator, could voluntarily identify those best management practices, which will become conditions on the state permit and are enforceable by state. So, that is sort of the structure of the MOU process.
And that was the, certainly the avenue that we were driving down.
Sure.
Hit the fireplug, I don't know, but we...
No, I haven't read your MOU. I just, I saw it this morning for the first time. I have your regulations, but I think the structure of that really is just a contract between the county and the operator.
Yeah, and when we were writing up that draft of the MOU, there was a great spread of opinion of how...
I was putting it...
Yeah, I was going to use a different word, but that, yes. And what we recognized, in fact, is we put a disclaimer right at the start, as in, it was just a start. And I don't know, to be honest with you, in a practical sense, what an MOU is going to look like until we negotiate for it.
Well, I think there are really two parts to it. And the most important part is the practical aspect. So, Erie has an MOU that has very, not lengthy, but it has sort of a, the substance of it is a contract between Erie and an operator. And it says things like, "Once every six months, we're going to sit down and talk about how this is working and how we can prove it and, you know, see what's working and see what isn't." And then Exhibit A to that MOU is a list of very specific technical requirements which the operator turns over to the permitted staff at the commission, a bunch of engineers, to apply to a very specific permit. So, there are parts of the MOU that the commission isn't going to enforce and doesn't really clarify. But those technical aspects, which could be on Exhibit A, are turned over to the permitted staff at the commission. And that's, those are the ones that say...
So, and I don't need you interrupting at this point, I understand. So, when we turn it over to the commission, then it becomes part of the regulatory authority of the commission itself?
Right. So, under your contract with the operator, the operator needs to have a contractual duty to voluntarily assign those BMPs, the best management practices, during the permitting phase at the state level. And then the commission will attach those BMPs to the permit like it frequently does. So, to step back, you know, the commission rules are really the baseline. And on every permit, there's some sort of site specific requirement that's imposed on Form 2 and Form 2A, which is the APD, Application for Permit to Drill, and 2A is the location assessment, the oil and gas location assessment or open. So, on each of those permits, there are site specific rules above and beyond the baseline rules of the commission that are imposed. And they can be anything from avoiding, you know, the mud season, you know, avoiding drilling when there's runoff, whatever is necessary to make the project make sense. So, at that permitting stage, when your operator is submitting these materials, these application materials to the commission, you want to be sure that your MOU provides for a contractual duty for that operator to voluntarily say, "I'm going to do X, Y, and Z." And your LGD, your local government, does need, needs to make sure and monitor the compliance with your MOU and make sure that your operator voluntarily agreed to do X, Y, and Z on the state permit. So, that's, I think that's a very important role of your LGD, sort of police and monitor compliance with your MOU. And then, if they don't, your operator just breached your contract and you have all of your civil remedies and you need to make sure that, you know, they're honoring that contract.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Is that during the writing process and the editing process, one of the comments that was made by several, I want to say several, I don't know, a couple of four or five, but that is that to what extent, once the agreement is made and it is put in as part of the Oil and Gas Commission's permitting process, to what extent would you help us enforce it?
That's 100%. You know, the whole, the whole purpose of the MOU is to impose requirements that a local government may otherwise be preempted from imposing.
Is that something that's... I wanted to clarify though, because my understanding is that you can only things that are under our jurisdiction?
Right. And that's why I say there's clearly two pieces to your MOU.
Well, I understand you can, you have government some, but the way that's right in the oil and gas...
Under my prior example, the commission, you know, I said, the first piece of your MOU is, for example, we're going to have an annual meeting between the operator and the local government to figure out whether this is working or not. We are not, the commission can't enforce that. But if there's a technical piece that is on this Exhibit A that becomes part of our permit, we can absolutely enforce that.
So, as a silly example, if we, if the MOU says, "Thou shalt paint your tanks pink." And they go up there in the ground, is that, or is that so silly that you would ignore it or...
No, I, I think that's an absurd example, but if it's on our permit, we can enforce it and we will enforce it. And if there's a violation, for example, let's say there is, let's say the tanks are painted and you call up Nancy and say, "Hey, we need to enforce on this. Our permit says that these, these tanks aren't painted, or these tanks need to be painted in brown." And Nancy says, "Well, that's silly, we're not going to do anything about it." Well, under the commission rules, you're entitled to initiate a hearing before the entire nine member of the commission to say...
Well, obviously how it works.
You're not enforcing our permit and we want you to enforce it. So, you have an effective means, assuming the commission were to ignore the content of its own permit, which is not going to happen, you can enforce it.
But that's another material, you know, I appreciate it having the chance to come talk to you all when you were in the process of drafting these regulations. I think it was very helpful. And I kind of put some of that down in the beginning of the year, not really a presentation, but it's more about some of the things that are beyond our purview, for example, stormwater permits or county roads, things like that. Those really don't have a place in what goes into our permit, because that's not, you know, our inspectors, we go out and see what we're doing, what CDP, AT, has to do with.
You know, the question was directed more to comfort than, because you've got citizens that say, "Well, if you do all this, then what?" And you basically think, "Then what?" Is this, do you have an avenue to...
There's real teeth.
There's real teeth, yeah. Is there anything else to...
No, I don't know what you, you know, that's the structure I think that is really effective and I think that's the path that you're on. And you know, the tendency is to sometimes flood things into your standard sort of baseline regulations that may be best left to an MOU.
I'm just going to say that again. I'm a slow learner, you have to...
An operator may not agree to an MOU.
Yes.
Therefore, in order to hedge your bets and get the things you want, you may incline to flood those things into your baseline rules.
Oh, into the regulations?
Right.
Okay, or if we can find the regulations.
And I think those are better left than...
Well, here was the philosophy, tell me if it's flawed or not. The idea is, our preference is the MOU rule. However, somebody might tell us that you guys are ridiculous and they want to basically get the permits under the county rules in a different way. And what we hope is, we have a mechanism, is the different ways you go through the full planning and zoning process, which is a pain, it is a pain. But you will be able to get your permit in that manner and you'll get it in, if you will get it in that manner, you basically, you go through all of the land use issues and grading and storm and all that kind of stuff. But you do get your permit and you get it without any encumbrance of, and I'm not a lawyer, so I might be using the wrong word, but without any other stuff attached to it.
Right.
And so, but our thinking is, and maybe it's flawed, but our thinking was, why would anybody that has the education of a six-year-old want to go that way when a special, a special youth fund, basically going to require everything, perhaps not the setbacks, but everything that you would have, that you would negotiate in an informal way, or informal way, I guess, in your MOU.
Right. Well, I think...
But we wanted to have a plan, so if you said, "You guys are crazy, the MOU is nuts." There's still a practical way for you to get your permit.
Well, I think the MOU is a vehicle for you to negotiate things which you cannot otherwise not mandate. So, and that, and that's where I think there are some tensions with your regulations. There are some things you cannot mandate.
All right, hold on, tell us what you... You'll find, I get to the floor.
Sure, so do I. I mean, there's some missing stuff which I'm not going to...
Well, I'm not in my...
One sort of question I had was on this permit expiration, and I don't think it's a problem, this is really just more of a question on my part. It's a two-year, two-year permit and then it says, "No extension of this deadline will be granted, a new permit application will be required." And I don't understand why you'd want to tie your hands in that way and I would...
Well, I'll tell you what the logic is and it may be flawed. The logic was is that the world changes in two years and we recognize sometimes rigs aren't available, geology is, when the site is done, doesn't come in exactly the way you thought of it, so you have to reinterpret and all this kind of thing. But a couple of things that were come to mind is that, you know, like water handling and some of these different things, haul routes and all these things, over time...
Your approval goes stale.
We don't want it to go forever. And so, what we were told, and I think Nancy told us, is that state regulations basically have a two-year sunset in it.
It is two, yes.
Yeah, so rather than be, I'll tell you what, this took two meetings to say, "Well, let's just follow the state rules."
Yes.
The whole idea is that the world changes and we felt like a sunset was appropriate. Now, is it the right number, right number?
No, it is the right number and I think all these things that you said are valid and I understand them, but there is some flexibility of the state. And on a couple of occasions, they have been extended, so that two-year period has been extended. And then, my sort of opposite take on that is, let's say that you have a permit that's going to expire in June and the operator is in a rush to get out there in early spring and you may not otherwise want the operator to get out on sensitive turf.
It becomes very much like a lease expiry agreement.
Right, right. So, the operator has to get out there when it may not be the most convenient. If you have the power to extend it for six months under appropriate circumstances and your discretion, then that makes sense. But I just, if I were in your shoes, I wouldn't want to have my hands tied like that. But, like I said, I don't think there's any problem with it, I just think that flexibility is good.
Now, as far as the state permit is concerned, how do you handle that extension? Is it just a...
The operator, the operator had to file an application to extend the deadline for the duration of their permit. It's happened twice since I've been there.
Yeah, division of conflict.
The operational conflicts discussion on page four, which is paragraph J, you know, I think it could be more conclusory, instead of trying to paraphrase the law of operational conflicts, which is in 10 different cases, and you're trying to paraphrase that into two sentences, I think you could just be very conclusory and say, "As the operator comes to the Board of County Commissioners and proves there's an operational conflict, we're going to reconsider the regulation giving rise to that operational conflict."
You don't think this does that? If it doesn't, that was the intent.
Well, there are, I know that that was the intent, but I don't think it's a perfect statement of the law.
Okay.
And you could make it shorter and more conclusory, you're saying, I think you're saying the same thing or trying to say the same thing without...
Leaving some of them off.
Right. My comment, I just had a comment on the re-completion refracturing provision. Your rule basically says, "If an operator can recomplete a refract well, we can get a permit from the county." And that's, the same is true with the state. And I think, and there's not really any detail in your regulations as to what would be required in order to get that permit, but I suspect that it really mirrors the other regulations that you already have in here.
Well, let me tell you what the intent is and then, and if we don't have it, we'll fix it. And the intent was is that particularly for the more highly populated areas of the county is that if a refract is contemplated, that all of a sudden the road usage goes up and the activity around a well goes up and all of these kind of things. And the county officials all of a sudden get a lot of telephone calls and wires and maybe a few stories about they're not doing the job part of the work. The whole point was is so, is to put, so that there was a formal way that they were informed of what was going on and perhaps get a small fee for the, for the road usage and everything. In terms of the drilling permits, you know, they have to get an agreement with the road and bridge and all those kinds of things, haul routes and all that kind of stuff. So, the whole idea was, although this isn't as onerous in terms of its impact on the county with respect to drilling, because there's more stuff that goes on, more continuing operations, on the other side of the coin, there is an impact and that was the idea. So, that was, that was what that was all about.
Right. Yeah, and I don't see a problem with it, I was just curious about what the process would be.
Well, basically, the process as we see it, and I'm going to defer to our people that really know what I, I shouldn't know what I'm, or tell me what I shouldn't be talking about, is that the whole intent was is just to make sure that they were informed and make sure that the road and bridge had been informed and if it was appropriate... And if it was appropriate, the first responders were informed, just enough to, just so we're knowledgeable.
Right, knows to, who made the impact.
And when I talked to our planning department, they contemplated something pretty simple.
Grant?
Yes.
As I read this, if I understand your question, it actually makes sense, because all we say here is that they need to get a permit, but we don't actually define that. So, perhaps what we need to do is add some language in here, that it is an administrative, over-the-counter permit.
I think that's a reasonable comment.
I'm Carolyn Parkinson, I'm a planner, community development services.
I think you're right now, you're the designated, what do they call them?
Yeah, the LGD, by default.
Yeah, we'll beef that up a little bit, if that's a concern to you, because the intent is somewhat innocuous.
It's really not a concern, I'm just curious. The other thing is, you know, I had a question before about plugging abandoned wells. And for example, you said, well, for more populated areas of the county, and what if there was someone that's going to recomplete or refract a well? The question to me was, well, what if in that scenario, there was a plugging abandoned well that is 10 feet from a school inside a subdivision that was placed on the land 20 years after that well was plugged and abandoned? The answer is, that well could not be plugged, that well could not be re-entered.
Of course not, yeah.
Because.
Well, I think you may be remembering.
The new setback will treat that well as basically not there anymore.
Yeah, I understand.
So, even if a landowner has a land use agreement, they couldn't go in that, they couldn't refract that well?
I mean, that scenario, no. I mean, they'd have to re-drill it.
Yeah, we've got some language issues here. And we've had this issue, whether we've been working on the thing, is, once a well's plugged and abandoned, it's full of cement.
It should be, yeah.
Yes. And there were some people that wanted us to go in and clean them out and do casing bond logs and all that kind of stuff. And Nancy said, just right, of course, having done that for most of my life, I said, you can't do it. And Nancy said, well, you can, but you own it. And the whole point is here, is that sometimes we have to recognize the reality on the ground. Once a well's plugged, it's plugged. And the re-entry of it is akin to a whole new drilling exercise.
But as opposed to a shuttering?
I'm sorry.
As opposed to a shuttering well, and I think that's kind of what your question was, that there's some issues with community development, a shuttering well.
Again, I'm not quite sure, where did you ask them to?
Where, I think where it's sort of, the setback was. You know, the default rule is, a well cannot be placed within 1,000 feet of a home unless the operator goes to the entire commission and tells the nine-member commission why it's impossible to do the project any other way. And that's never happened, and that is a huge business incentive for any operator to attempt to locate a well within 1,000 feet of a home. Other wells are approved administratively at the commission through the permitting stat.
Explain to me, this is for my application, is the difference between 1,000 feet and what we just reported, 500 feet, what's the difference?
There are, so there are, and I actually have, this is the presentation that I have, and I don't have it, so please do you. It's a summary of the new water management rules, and it's a summary of the setback rules. And the new setback rules establish new zones, and within, that are triggered by the distance from the reservoirs. And depending on whether you're 1,000 feet or 500 feet, different mitigation measures apply. So.
So, between 1,000 and 500, it's, the consideration is mitigation, like the impact?
Correct.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
My understanding of that is that the 500 or 1,000 feet is related to the density, whether it's a dense enough area. And just for your information, we don't have any areas that dense.
Right.
So, it's pretty much always going to be 500 feet in every county, except for schools and stuff like that. Just so the commissioners kind of understand what he's talking about. We don't actually have any of those 1,000 foot.
Again.
We don't have that much density in one place to trigger that 1,000-foot setback.
So, what you're saying is, based on your interpretation, are the statewide setbacks would always be 500 feet in this county?
Well, they are today. I mean, tomorrow, maybe we'll have crazy density. But as of right now, we don't have that kind of density anywhere in the county. Unless I'm understanding it correctly.
You're right. And if, I'm sorry, I.
I just want to make sure I understand it correctly.
In this, I think the density there.
I think I didn't have it right.
Yeah, just making sure that I understand what you just said. As a relation of a county, the statewide regulation would be, in a practical sense, 500.
500. But if you're within 1,000, it's recompletions, skill ring burns, increased VOS burn. So, there's additional VMPs essentially required.
Statewide VMPs.
Right.
And the VMPs that are required are tiered. There are some that are more required, more required than 500 feet, a few less than 1,000 feet, and then there's still a significant, even if they're required, so.
So, it's pretty much the same concept as we have in the MOU. And second, instead of 1,000 feet, we've inserted 13, 20. The whole idea is, you can get back to the 500 feet, as you mitigate your way back. Is that, is that the proper extension?
I had a question for you on, it's on page eight, the policy statement Z3. And it reads, those production companies that enter into an MOU with the county, the permitting process will then be administrative and based upon the applications submitted, approved, approved with conditions, or denied by the director of CDF. And my question is, if the MOU is entered into by the operator and the county, what sort of additional conditions could the county impose above and beyond the MOU? In other words, if the MOU reflects your entire agreement, what other conditions could be imposed prior to the issue?
One might be an acceptable water source, or something like that, you know?
And I don't view it as a problem, but I view it as a potential hang-up for an operator's safety as well. If the whole purpose of the MOU is to achieve a certain certainty, what sort of additional conditions could be imposed above and beyond the MOU? So, that's a question for an operator, huh?
So, you're saying that's something that's been negotiated and really doesn't apply to the regulation?
Right.
To heads up, to be prepared to negotiate.
Right.
Or to discuss it anyway.
Right.
One of the things, one of those were on that page, I'd like to directly to one, where in that last sentence there, it says, a standard MOU may be amended as demonstrated. That was our attempt to accommodate the reality. And whatever we use as the standard setback, this is 1,000 feet or 13, 20. But the intention there is, if you have set specific circumstances, you can mitigate your way back all the way to the 500. And if we didn't do that there, that was, that was the intent, that.
No, I think that makes perfect sense. I mean, again, it's a contract, and any contract can be amended by the parties. So, that's great. There's a community meeting provision at page 11 of this draft that I wrote. And there are community meetings contemplated or required under the newest setback rules.
The state's setback?
Yeah. And I don't know if Sarah or Nancy want to talk about those, what the requirements are, but my understanding is that notice goes out to the people who will be affected by an operation. They can request a meeting, your LGD can request a meeting with the operator to talk about what the operation is going to look like, when it's going to happen, when the trucks will come in, what access roads are going to be used. So, sort of the, you know, nuts and bolts of the operation are discussed in a community meeting. And I just thought that, again, I don't think there's anything wrong with this, but it's somewhat appropriate.
Almost like a community meeting.
Can I address that? The reason we included that is, that's really, comes directly out of land use. What we have found, we used to have something called a concept plan, that was very official, and it had out-of-here-ing and all this stuff. And the idea behind it was to ferret out any problems that we could mitigate prior to going forward with the application. But it was way too long. So, we ended up going to this community meeting, because it was relatively quick. It served the same purpose. You know, if some guy's got a specific problem, you're going to tear up my driveway, or whatever. It comes out in that community meeting, because that community meeting is aimed specifically at those property owners who are directly affected, they're directly adjacent to the property. And there are going to be real specific usually issues. That a lot of times, that community meeting, we save ourselves a ton of time by having that community meeting, getting that stuff taken care of before they even submit. They might say, you know, I don't have to go that way. I can miss your driveway entirely by going this way, or, you know, whatever. And that's the purpose behind that community meeting? And like I say, it comes directly out of how we do land use for that reason.
I agree completely. And I think all of the reasons for your meeting are the reasons that the commission, her attorney's rulemaking, that we can fix a lot of problems before they arise.
Right.
We actually talk to the people who have been impacted. So, just maybe.
So, are you suggesting that we try and drive some way to make your meeting and our meeting the same meeting? Is that what your comment is?
No, I'm not asking you to make any changes, I'm just alerting you to back that, if you have a similar process, and if you want to adopt that process, or add a sentence that says, in the event the operator applies with the commission rules concerning community meetings, that shall be, you know, and it's held.
Waived or something?
Yeah, and it's held in the courthouse.
I agree, why do it twice? Nancy, I'm actually unfamiliar with that process, so why don't we talk about that?
I think that would be.
I'm just looking at that, really clarifying just a little bit about the notice. The notice, it goes out 30 days before the operator submits the application to the COGCC, will alert people within 1,000 feet that there is going to be an application submitted. And at that time, they are given information about how to contact their LGD. And they're also given, and since this is coming from the operator, the operator will give them their contact information and say, you know, if you want a meeting, this is how we go about setting it up. And the operator is obviously to have a meeting if he's requested to. If the operator is not requested to go to the meeting. And the meeting form can be either copied across the table with, you know, one person, if there's only one person in the affected area, or it could be a larger community meeting. Or it could be in between.
One of the things that these regulations, and I forgot exactly where it is, and I have to figure out where it was put, is that it was contemplated in the county here, that a larger area would be notified.
Right.
So, is that a problem?
I don't think there's a problem.
We're just telling them there's going to be a well up there, and one of the things that seemed like, when we had public workshops, finding people up on that, that seemed to be something that they just wanted to know. So, the larger area is not a problem.
That's also related to rural. A mile, you'd maybe hit two people. I mean, it's like.
Well, we've got a bigger dilemma than that. And that is, we've got some very rural areas, and we've got very few roads, especially going east and west. So, even though, the thing maybe five miles away, and I'm exaggerating for, like my silly pink comment, is that more people are affected than is usual, just because you have a high concentration of the use of the very few roads we have, particularly in eastern county. And that's part of the reason why the larger area was kept, in terms of notification.
No, I think, you know, the case law recognizes that local governments are entitled to have their own process. You want to have a completely duplicative process, that is your prerogative. And I'm not saying it's completely duplicative. All I'm saying is, if you can streamline it to where a point where you're comfortable, I think that makes sense.
Do you want to record that?
This is not going to be a popular comment. On page 14, dust control measures. Your rule says that under no circumstances may produced water be used as a dust suppression metric. I think it's rare, I think it does happen, and if it does happen, a recommissionable needs to meet the rule 910 standards, which is whether something's clean or not. And so, I think this is a broad day that should be addressed. Because as written, your rules would prohibit something that the state would allow under some of the circumstances. And this, I think, is a perfect example where something can be used in your MOU. Exactly. So, your MOU should say, operators, you're never going to put produced water on a road.
Oh, I see. So, you're saying it would be best handled with the MOU rather than the regulations?
Right.
Folks, I'd appreciate if you'd let us, if you need to speak, you step outside, we would appreciate it, thank you.
I'm just going to tell you, the logic can, I was the lone dissenting vote here, because as I understand it, the state requirements, if you put produced water on the roads, you can't have any more than, what, 3,500 parts per million?
I couldn't, I couldn't say that.
It's pretty doggone close to such water. And the concern was, real or not, it doesn't matter, but the concern was, or problem it is, is that the ability to monitor what the oil companies are putting on the road, it was probably very difficult. Now, I understand from self-interest, because I spent much of my life on the other side of the thing there, is, you're not going to put it on, because you don't want to suffer the pain. But that was the genesis of that, is that there was quite a few people that were very concerned that there's no way of policing that on the, how do I want to say this, the lack of logic in this, is that to the extent that you use produced water that meets the state criteria, that's, and every barrel you use is a barrel you can have to take out of an aquifer. So, it's, there really is a trade. But in the end, the committee decided that the risk was greater than the reward on that. No, I certainly understand what you're saying, so I'm going to revisit that.
Ed, do you have any issue about using produced water on the roads for dust control? Since you're the resident expert on dust control?
Ed Ayman, Director of Public Works, from our side of it, as long as it meets the state requirements, we don't have an issue with it being applied to the road. We see it as part of our best mitigation plans and things like that. So, as long as it meets all of the, all of the requirements, we're fine with it.
And I, like I said, I couldn't explain how frequently that occurs.
I don't think it's very frequent yet.
I don't think it's very frequent, but. On page 15 and 16, there's a reference to hazardous material inventory statements. And I just don't know what that looks like. And the reason I'm interested is that, you know, the commission has a host of regulations concerning chemical inventories and reporting to the commission. And this seems like it may be very similar.
Now, here was what the thinking was, is that by having that inventory, then the responders would know what's there. And perhaps we didn't recognize to what extent that the state already does that. And maybe we just have to find some way to make sure that the information gets to the appropriate people. And again, the. And again, the...
And another kind of just question was, on that same page, it says, "Access requirements include unobstructed 20-foot all-weather surface to the tank battery." I just didn't know what that meant. Is that a term of art? Is that cement or is that clear and opaque, snow off or what does that mean?
Sound of glue.
All-weather surface is pretty well defined, if it not.
Yeah, I think the intent there was that it would meet like our driveway standards. So we wanted to be able to support a fire truck or emergency type equipment. We have several of them in the county now that are just two-track roads and as we have issues there, we're not able to respond or the emergency responders are not able to. So that's the only reason for that.
And it may be redundant because one of the expectations within the regulations is the oil company has to enter into a road use agreement with the road and bridge. So they would include that in there. So your comment is maybe we're trying to use...
No, Grant. Because that would be, no, that would be private property. So that would not be something that Road and Bridge would include in their road maintenance agreement?
I think the way Rattahooka had it handled, Ed, is they put that in their MOU and agreed on how to make sure that the roads were accessible from road to the...
And I agree. I'd agree.
Is that what you then, you covered with that?
Yeah.
Fire, fire disagrees with that.
Which part?
The MOU. We have no control over the MOU. We...
Oh, not the right time. But we can talk about it.
That was just an observation that that's the way that Rattahooka had it dealt with because they had similar issues.
As it relates to the private portion of that...
The private portion of the roads, the operators agreed to excessive bill on the roads across the company. OGC's comment on that was that they were concerned that some of the surface owners might not be amenable to having that kind of road on the property. So that was, I think, quite that way with that.
Yeah, that's one of the things, he actually said something that's pretty important and I say this more for the public's consumption than ours, is that the oil companies will enter into surface use agreements with all the property owners that they affect. And the public needs to understand that you've got a negotiating position there with respect to that surface use agreements. And they're very important in terms of roads, in terms of impacts and these kind of things. But I don't think it forms into a regulation. That's again, one of those complex things between the operator and the parent of the surface owner.
And then, really just as a corollary of how you dispose of produced water and whether you can put it on a leased road or not, on page 17, you have an entire section dealing with the control and disposal of produced liquids. The commission has pages and pages of how you deal with E and P waste and produced water is an E and P waste. So I think this entire section is an issue with the commission because we have tons of regulation dealing with how you address disposal of E and P waste.
So is your concern that this is that, on state regulations, or is your concern is, why did we have it?
I think, I think this, you know, in operators' obligations and how to deal with E and P waste is spelled out in the commission. There are pages and pages of what you are and are not allowed with E and P waste in the commission.
I've been retired for some time, but I remember getting, I remember school's permits and it best describes this team, it goes on forever and ever.
So I just, I just think that, you know, pits are discussed, open pit storage, open storage pits, you know, there's a presumption against the use of open storage pits. Well, there is no presumption. Again, I think they're certainly disfavored, but they could be permitted by the state. So I think, you know, this disposal treatment of E and P waste is a purely operational issue.
Let's talk about that for a minute because we spent an inordinate amount of time on this issue and this was kind of compromised language in the end, is that, to me, pits are not a bad thing. Although, the problem with the public perception of these pits is the public, or much of the public perceives them as being a bad thing because they don't know what's in them. And so the way we tried to finesse that or maybe kick the can down the road, I don't really wanna describe it, was is that we would not disallow pits. However, we would want to have them go through a permitting process so that the public was fully informed and that we would really know from a global standpoint, we'd know what was in it. And then probably the most important part, at least in the energy community view, was the presumption that they work there except that you knew that you couldn't stop them because it's governed by the state. However, we wanted to recognize that technology is changing so rapidly in terms of water handling. We didn't wanna have a fixed rule that included or allowed something, that we really didn't know what we were including or allowing. So the whole idea there was to allow, recognize that pits will probably be there or might be there at some point. But there had, what we desired was a formal and fairly inclusive permitting process. And with that intention in mind, is that a conflict with the state?
I think it is. And I think the commission has an exhaustive OGA, oil gas location assessment process. And I actually was gonna bring some of the engineering drawings, how these are engineered and how they're used. And, you know, the commission view of them really isn't fixed either. You know, you're saying we don't wanna be led to allowing something that may evolve due to technological advances five years from now. I think the technology is advancing and I think commission rules are key enough with those advances, whether it's through sealing berms or line pits or closure requirements or just getting away from this altogether through green conditions or other methods. So I think the commission is effectively addressing how this is used as well as the broader question of how E and P waste is treated. So I would like to be able to give you a better picture of what, Greg Ramelow is the person who leads the group with the commission. And if I could have him talk to you or, you know, let you know more about what we do to give you greater certainty about pits and disposal of E and P waste would be helpful. Because I know that they are, they're very worded and nobody likes them and the commission is certainly getting away from them. I don't have the statistics on hand, but in my view, it's an operational, technical issue that is comprehensively regulated by the commission.
So, and again, this is meant to be a fishing question, so this seems a little innocuous as meant to be, is that, so at the county level, what do you think that we should do with respect to keeping our populace involved, informed, that kind of stuff? Where should we be on the continuum of managing open, not freshwater, that production, whether it has produced water or frac, where should we be on that continuum? Or should we be on the...
Well, I think, again, one easy thing to, this is sort of low-hanging fruit maybe to include it in your MOU. If you're only dealing with a handful of operators who are at the table with you and talking about, if you believe they're working in good faith to resolve your concerns, then the mission would need to abide by all the requirements that you would like imposed through the system.
I understand the comment, but let me, I have the comment of the editing committee. Editing committee viewed these particular, freshwater pits, one they had talked, it's a flowback pit. The concern was is those pits might not be operated specific in terms of, you know, recycling of water, disposal and those kind of things. The concern was is that if we put it in an MOU, an MOU by definition is operated specific. So, and that's where the conflict in the conversation is.
Well, your MOU could say, "You use this pit, you're only making use of this pit. You own it and you're not allowed, you're not allowing anyone else to use it." So I understand what you're saying. You're worried about co-mingle waste in the single pit and...
Well, I think there's good commercial disposal law. You know, we had, God help us all, months worth of conversation about those. And then they recognized that that water, that those produced fluids have to go somewhere. So disposal law is not a bad thing.
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that once two operators co-mingle produced water into a common pit, it loses, it's no longer E and P waste under RICRA and it becomes subject to permitting by the Department of Health and not the oil gas officials. So I think there's an operator-specific incentive to not do what you're worried about.
We have a centralized E and P waste management program also that's covered in our regulations.
Right. So Anadarko and Noble use a pit together to form an entity that owns that pit and nobody else is allowed to place E and P waste in that pit. So there's ownership and it's not the tragedy of the commons problem that people are incentivized to dump stuff into a pit that they don't own.
And the regulation of these pits is even more structured, that's right. They have specific monitoring requirements, they have specific monitoring requirements, reporting requirements that are other than the oil company's own. And just, I was just looking at your, I keep pointing back to your Rattahooka, because in extra neighbors, you have approximately the same operators and very similar geography and geology. And they have put their pit preferences in the MOU.
Yeah, I saw that and that was quite detailed. On the other side, okay. So just circling back to get this done, as that relates to the open flowback pits, I thought I'd ask the question one more time because I'm not sure I grasped the answer, is that at what level should the county, our county be involved in the regulation?
What can the county effectively impose on an operator?
Or what should be imposed? Can is one thing, but should is perhaps the more useful word to me?
I think there's very little that the county can effectively impose when it comes to the disposal or treatment of E and P waste without going file the state over. And using an MOU to accomplish what you desire is one effective way to do it. And demanding a hearing, you know, local governments always have the right to object to the issuance of a permit in front of this nine-member commission with my client. And local governments don't take that opportunity. So let's say there's an operator who goes to MOU with you and says, "I'm not gonna do a green condition or I'm not gonna do fitless drilling. I'm gonna do it the old-fashioned way because it's cheaper and I don't care what you have to say about it." Well, your LGD can go report to a higher nine-member commission and say, "They're doing it the wrong way and we should require them to do it the right way. And this is what we want." And the commission is composed comprised of very sophisticated engineers who do things the right way and have a very high level of expectation from people who work in that corner. So the short answer is I don't think you can legally require it. But the long answer is I think there are other practical ways that you can impose it.
You actually could get a different question, is that some of our LGOs, for reasons of history, don't know between an outhouse and a wellhead. So how would they be able to effectively make a presentation to, some of it has to do with language, some of it has to do with philosophy, some of it has to do with life experience? So somebody that, and I'm gonna use Carol as an example, who's a planner that's become pretty skilled in terms of the industry language, but doesn't have an education in that background and things like that, would the expectation when you went before the nine-member board was that they'd be steeped in the jargon and all of that kind of stuff? Or with somebody that has a lesser knowledge of the industry, but a deep knowledge of what you want to accomplish, would they be successful in making a presentation?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, there are people from various backgrounds and levels of expertise who do take the opportunity to come forward with the commission and voice their concerns. They, local governments have not utilized that opportunity that I just, that procedure in my opinion that I just articulated, but...
Is it because of fear or of knowledge or...
I think the fear is that it constitutes a concession that whatever you're asking for is outside your jurisdiction. Page 18 reads, there's a line on that, that "Nothing contained in this section shall be construed so as to require the closure or abandonment of existing oil and gas well currently in operation in accordance with the COGCC requirements." And at the beginning of your regulations, talk about a period of inactivity and if a well is shut in for 36 months, the auxiliary equipment must be removed, which seems a lot to me like the removal of technical equipment.
Yeah, let's talk about what the intent for the, is that many of us that have spent our lifetime in the oil industry know that there's many, many different levels of oil and gas operators. There's the exploration and then the development and then the wind down and then there's the stripper production producers that come in. And I think the concern there is that often, when you get to the twilight time of the reservoir, that many companies will shut wells in waiting for a spike in oil prices and things like that and generally let the infrastructure deteriorate. In fact, we've got a few of these in our county where if you drive by them and say, "Oh, gosh, this looks like an abandoned car yard." And what the intent there was is to say, okay, if you don't, our preference would be if you're not gonna use them, abandon them, but that's not the way the state regulations work. So what our intent there was is if you're not going to have ongoing activity over a reasonable period of time, at least you clean the damn place up. And that was our intent.
So get rid of tanks and...
Yeah, and you used that silly example from a div, the well was built in the 1950s and the tanks are painted pink at the local, the company, and they have them in painted scents and there's abandoned treaters and separators on the location and think, we don't have to be very clever to go find some locations that look like this.
Yeah.
And the whole idea was is that just work proud of this county, we want you to participate in being proud of this county. So we didn't know how else to do it except that if you don't have a continuum of operations, a reasonable hiatus in there, is that clean it up and then shut it down.
Sure. I'm curious about your junkyard analogy and whether, you know, your concerns have been raised to the commission and whether they've been addressed because if there are rusty old things that need to be taken care of, I couldn't agree more.
Well, and then, you know, to answer your question directly, is often these places are on fairly rural roads and things like that. It hasn't been till recently that the oil and gas activity in the county has escalated that we've been consensitized to what we have.
Sure.
And the whole intent there is, you know, if you use it or lose it, sort of thing.
Sure.
So if you find discomfort in that and must talk about it, but that was the logic.
Yeah, and, you know, the MIT requirements and shut-in is to be sure that it's safe.
Yep, yep.
And part of the answer to your question is, what you're describing is what we consider interim reclamation. It's all about, you know, where the汇 pad is open and they're drilling, then they have a large area. Once they finish the drilling and they go to the production phase, then it's scaled back to a smaller area. And then some of these older wells you're talking about, I mean, that could be half the size of this table. But the 1003 series talks about what the site should look like on what's interim like reclamation. And the inspectors, if they get a call, how the future site can go out.
So let me make that, sure I understand what you're saying. It said, "Don't worry." You're saying to us, "Don't worry about this, just give us a call and we'll make it, do clean it up." Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure that's... I'm not sure that's what we're saying. I'm saying, I was really questioning more about a specific example, that when we drive to work every day, and we see some eyesore, and it's a problem, whether complaints that have been lodged with the commission to figure out whether there's an adequate, you know, is the financial assurance update, say, has an MIT been informed?
MIT?
With a mechanical integrity test, to make sure that the well bore is doing what it should do.
Well, then, you can pass one without the other. You know, if you're talking about pressure integrity and lack of leaks.
Right.
That's one thing, but I think we're talking about something a little different than that in terms of, if you're using it, and it's painted in a reasonable, is in reasonable repair, you don't have a problem with that. It's that next layer that, and if you drive out, not in this kind, but if you walk towards Last Chance, if you look around, some wells on each side of the road, there is a, oh gosh, I hope it doesn't look like that here in our county, and we can find spots here that probably look like.
Well, and that's why I referred you to one thousand and three, because you're going to look at the rules for yourself and see, you know, this, this section on, we can go for example.
So, well, let's get to the point, and the point is, you have problems with the time that in our?
All right, some of it's unclear to me. You know, ancillary is a fine term in your rules, but this rule requires all of our associated auxiliary equipment to be removed. What is, is it something different?
What our intent was, no, our intent, and again, you've got an immigrant engineer trying to pretend he's the lawyer.
Yeah, and they pick you up and the lawyer.
The whole point was is that if you're not using it, put it somewhere else. And I don't care if it looks decent, well painted and that kind of, it's just that, I, I, we're talking about stripper and the issue.
Right, and I think we're really debating something that's such, it's on the fringe of?
And if you say, Brad, you've got to take that out of there, say, oh, okay. But you can see what our intent was, already.
That's it. Thank you so much for, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. You are in a very difficult position, and you're not the first to be in that position.
Do you feel like we handled the conversation appropriately?
I, absolutely, I, you know, I think that I'm way to work with Nancy, and I really appreciate the communication with the devil with you, I think it's been very helpful, and I hope it will continue.
If I was listening carefully, and my voice is, I don't listen very carefully at all, if I was listening carefully, the issues that we have be, we're not, and the issue is too strong of a word, but the items are relatively minor.
Right, I don't, I don't think that you're way out of bounds. I, I think there are some things, you know, that I, that I did raise that are important to the commission, but I don't think you're out of my field.
I'd like to hear from Sarah and Nancy regarding, like, Arapaho County and other local governments, what are they doing?
Who's Sarah taking that question? Well, I actually, I do it to their.
Okay. Let me speak quickly.
I think, I think it's very similar to what you all have done. The difference between some of what, what other jurisdictions have done is they've codified their MOU. So if you look at a Boulder County or a Love, what they've done is a dual-track regulatory structure, that it's all in the regulations, but it's a similar thing, it's the exact same thing. So, I think at this point, with the structure that you have, and if, you know, there are tweaks that are made so that these are fully aligned with the state, and it sounded like they would be very minor tweaks, this is a structure that COVID doesn't pose. The MOU, I understand that the operators are at the table and actively discussing it if you're negotiating it, I think there's some work needs to be done there as well. But this structure is one that?
Don't leave anything unworked.
I don't specifically have details on that. COVID doesn't involve themselves in MOUs, and neither does the state specific language in that, because it's a private contract between your operators and your local government. But I think what you have here is a structure that has been very successful in the years of the world, Arapaho counties, et cetera, that people have found, I think the word you used was acceptable, and that everybody came to agree on it. So I think this structure is a good structure to be implementing, is one that's encouraged by the COGCC and not opposed by COVID.
He did. As my mother used to say, he's a nice boy, but he does have a speech impediment. Do you see this as the way of the world, in terms of most counties going the route of some regulation, and then some more negotiable aspects to the oil and gas industry?
I don't yet see that this is becoming the norm. There are many jurisdictions, if you look at Windsor, places like that, that just rely on LGD, that say, we know that the state's rules are the most comprehensive and stringent in the country, and we'll use our LGD on a well-by-well basis. So that if they see a well in a more rural area, they know, okay, the state's rules are exactly what we need. But if you get closer to say, school, or something like that, or any sort of sensitive area, the LGD will contact the COGCC directly and say, these are the conditions of approval that we would like applied to this permit at the state level. So it's doing the same thing that your MOU does with technical aspects, in that the liability is on the commission and the state to impose, and not on the local jurisdiction. And so it's a very quick process that the COGCC approves or doesn't. So this is what Colorado Springs did as well with their permits. They sent a laundry list of things that they wanted, the commission wrote back and said, well, this is where we're regulating, so these things are going to be requested, it's duplicative. But these things, I mean, it was literally, they copied and visited one of the state permits, and they got what they wanted. And so, the backstop that Jake was referencing earlier, in that if you ask for a commission of approval as a local jurisdiction through your LGD, and you are not granted that commission of approval by the COGCC staff in their administrative process, you have full authority to go in front of the entire commission.
The commission being the?
The nine-member commission of the COGCC. Now, as Jake alluded to, there hasn't been such a lack of compromise that a local government has found the need to go in front of the full nine-person commission. So, the negotiation, the LGD process, the requesting of conditions of approval on permits has worked. And so a lot of governments are looking at the LGD process, and this is what we're going to start with. And if we find that this is too labor-intensive for one person to be doing, or if we just have one operator and we want an MOU so that we don't have to do this every time, then we'll go there. But we're seeing that people are starting to give just the LGD process partnered with the state regulations a shot, and it's effective, it's effective for many jurisdictions. But it's also effective in places like Arapaho, an area where you just have a handful of operators, to say, okay, here's an MOU, let's all do this. But we're not seeing that this is the norm by many means happening.
Let me ask you a couple of questions, just for my understanding. When you say the LGD route, basically what the Board of Commissions then is designate an individual or a group of individuals, and give them the authority to negotiate, not an MOU necessarily, but a list of conditions of approval.
Right, and that's on a well-by-well basis. So, the LGD gets immediate notification every time that a permit goes before the state. And so the LGD has a twenty-day period to count on that, and can extend it an additional ten days. And so that's when you realize that there are additional conditions that you need for unique community needs. You can request those just when that permit comes in. And so what this is, is a more overarching, every well must abide by these things. Through the LGD process, you can get very specific, and really get the most BMPs possible, because, you know, what you find with an MOU is that an operator says, on ninety-nine percent of the wells we drill, we can agree to every single thing that's in this MOU. But a hundred percent of the time, we can't say that we're necessarily going to do this, because there could be extenuating circumstances, we don't know if it's going to be on every single location that we want to drill. And so by using the LGD process, what you're doing is ensuring that, on a well-by-well basis, you're getting the most BMPs that you can get.
So basically, it's a checklist to check, is that you have this list of requirements, and given you an example, you've got an agreement from the local branch, you've got one from health, safety, and welfare, you've got one from a surface use, whatever the?
Right, paper, text, paper, right.
And then once you satisfy all of those checks, the LGD would say, okay, you've done all of that, we'll issue the permit upon receipt through some money or something.
Well, so what they did in the Springs is that they didn't even issue a local permit. They said, if you're going to do these additional conditions of approval that we've requested, and it's on a state permit, there's no need to have a local permit, that's what the Springs did. And they got every, every single thing that they requested, the state approved, and therefore they didn't, and it was all via email. I mean, it was literally, their LGD sent an email with a list, and they got an email back, and it said, yes, 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 or here's where we regulate that, through our rules.
And the things that on that list could be, whatever it wanted to be?
They could be whatever.
Could be in the fire department, in that area, building bridge, whatever the LGD did.
Those types of things would be more local permits. These are more technical issues, so we want closed loop, we don't want pits, we want a BRU if you're within this radius of a school or a nursing home, or something like that.
You've got to understand.
Vapor recovery. So, that's to have more capture and control of your BSCs, et cetera, things like that.
And for example, I think it's a town, you have a list on the right side of all of the permits that you have to get if you're going to do oil and gas operations in there. And so the operator can just go and put that list and say, okay, I've got a top two department.
So you're talking about a dispersal of permits rather than a unified?
Yes. And, you know, there are, you have the level of activity in your locality, but which one makes the most sense?
In there, we're getting close to the problem again, this time, at least from this, but does any of the staff have questions that they'd like to post to these people?
Um, no. I've asked a million questions, so, probably not.
I guess it would be, is there anybody else at this table that wishes to say something?
I think it's all laid out there, but I appreciate you guys coming out and talking to us. The more information that we have, then we can make a more informed choice, and these kind of meetings help a lot. Thank you.